Good evening and welcome to the Newport News City Council Meeting for September the 10th. If you're here to speak before council tonight, we ask that you fill out a card located in the lobby. If the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, we ask that you mark Item I, which a matter's germane to the city council. On the podium, we have a light system. After you give your name and address, the green light will come on. At the end of two minutes, the yellow light, and at the end of three minutes, the red light. We then ask that you take your seat. The city council identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's city council agenda and provides an opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of council means matters that the city council, by law, is empowered to act upon. This does not include personal announcements to your business, your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would silence your phones. As usual, we have an invocation and a pledge, but tonight, in place of an invocation, we invite Naziah, a senior from Warwick High School, and a student representative of the Newport News School Board, to share a poem he wrote to honor his teacher. Afterwards, we're going to ask Councilman Jenkins to lead us in the pledge. For both, will you please stand?
Hello, my name is Isaiah Gore, and as you've heard, I will be delivering a poem. This poem is called "Ode to Teacher." I written it myself with a teacher in mind that helped me develop my own voice and my own authentic, my own authentic self. Her name is Alyssa Powell, and she was able to kind of introduce me to this world of music and how it can really show like, it can really show how you identify as yourself. It was you who showed me that all I wanted to achieve rests inside me. The person is not the sum of their parts, rather the sum of their will. And that will show me that despite the craziness of the world, I can control its tempo. How fast the world moves is up to me. And it was you who showed me how to use my hands, hands that can clap to the beat of the drums, hands that can connect to the crowd and, the hands that can reach to the crowd and connect, hands that can convey messages to the kids listening and show that the color of their skin does not define who they are. And what you taught me came more than just beats per minute, rather it lasted a lifetime because my voice has been the arsenal of my thoughts. My voice will no longer be drowned out by the other instruments because I am a drum, a dong, a crash that rings in the ear of every driver. And when I sing, you have always been my choir. You have told me to measure up to my full potential, and that showed me that even music has sharp, rough edges that can't be changed, but its beauty, its beauty is what makes it unique. You taught me that the phrase "every good boy does fine as a tail." For the ones who truly work hard deserve the award, and for that, I am thankful. My friend, I will teach you what my teacher has taught me. Let your smile part the hateful clouds, for the sun will always shine upon you, enough to soak up all the tears that will come your way. And when you're hurt or sick, I will teach you that music is easier to digest than medicine. Music can be the bandage that holds our world together, the cure for all diseases, as a vaccine that cures all the pain. I will teach you that music is an art, art is an instrument, and you can manipulate it to become the greatest masterpiece. You are music. Your heart can beat, feet can stomp, eyes can blink, you are an instrument. Use your keys as a way to change the world through your fingertips. Because that, that is what my teacher taught me. Thank you.
Please join me for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor John Ware of Lifehouse Newport News Church to come up for the Pouring Love Out to Our City presentation.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Vic. Here we go. My name is John Ware, Lead Pastor of Lifehouse Church here in Newport News. I wanted to start off by saying thank you for giving myself and Lifehouse Church the opportunity to share tonight. One of the core values of our church is that we are for our city. And when we say that, our goal as a church is to be known by what we are for instead of what we are against. What, what myself and many others have seen is that the church is typically known by what it is against instead of what, of what, of what it is for. And because of this, many people don't have a very positive perspective of the church and actually view it as a hindrance to the well-being and flourishing of a city. When my wife and I, along with 60 others, launched Lifehouse Church just over two years back, our goal was to change this. And we knew if this was going to, to happen, we had to do more than talk. Churches are really good at talking. We had to act. So in the third week of, so, so in 2018, in the third week of, of August, we held our first-ever For Our City Week, where we challenged our church to, to invest 1,000 community hours of serving, in, of, of serving our community through partnerships with current community invested, with currently community-invested organizations and schools already making a difference. We almost hit the goal, but fell short at 960 hours. This year, in the third week of August, we upped our goal to 1,200 hours, and thankfully, we beat it this year by investing over 1,500 hours of volunteering into our community. As we were thinking, as we were thinking about where we hope this vision of the church being for our city ultimately lands, we thought it was important to let our city, and especially its leaders, know that we are serious about this. And, and I believe that showing somebody or something you're serious is built on, is built on a promise. And this is what myself and Lifehouse Church would like to do tonight to our city and its, and its leaders. We would like to, to present tonight to the city council and Mayor Price and Vice Mayor Vic, a certificate of observance, letting you all know that for however long Lifehouse Church is here in this city, and we hope it's here a long time, the third Sunday in August will always be For Our City Sunday, and the third week in August will always be For Our City Week. And during this particular Sunday and week, we will invest thousands of hours volunteering to serve this city and make it better and highlight the many ways that human flourishing is happening in this city. Our ultimate hope and prayer is that this vision of the church being for our, our city would spread, and in 2020, we see this vision becoming reality. Our goal is to partner with at least five other churches during For Our City Week and invest at least 4,000 hours of volunteering into serving our, our city. And we would be honored to come back next year and share with you the results of this week and how we are progressing in unifying churches to be for our city. We, we believe that, that conducting an annual For Our City Week is just the beginning of how we see the church partnering with, with other community leaders and organizations to make Newport News a place where all people experience flourishing in every area of their lives. Thank you for letting me share, thank you for letting me share tonight. May God, may God bless you all, and once again, Lifehouse is for our city.
But I just want to say thank you, Pastor Ware and your entire church, because just standing for what you've talked about for our city will help change the mindset of people because you mentioned that so many people are so quick to say what's wrong with this place, but can you, would you join in, roll up your sleeves and help us fix it? Because it's going to take all of us as a community to get out and do the work. And so you're, I just applaud you, Pastor Ware, your entire congregation for this because this is going to be something to really help change our city. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, here we go, the photo train. Do you want this thing turned, turn on?
Mayor Price, may I say something real quick? And I just want to say, God does work in mysterious ways because I see Pastor Johnson, Dr. Tremaine Johnson, who's here, kept saying he's coming to the city council meeting, and I'm pretty sure that with all the work Pastor Johnson does as well with his community outreach, that you have a partner already right here with Pastor Johnson. So Pastor John, Pastor Dr. Tremaine Johnson, I'm pretty sure you guys can connect because he does a lot of great work down on the south side of town, or throughout the city, but he does a lot with his church, Aziah Baptist, and I know the great things you guys are doing as well. So you have a partnership already right here today, tonight.
And I just like to comment also, Pastor Ware, what you have done is really a paradigm of what other churches can do throughout our city. Just imagine if one church chose a week, every week there would be somebody doing something for our city, it would be a game changer for us. So thank you for your vision, and, and it was a pleasure to be at your church that Sunday.
And I want to tell you how much I enjoyed it too, even though I had to be led around because it was dark in there, I couldn't see. It was a great band and a great-
I'm used to music at my church.
I just want to thank you, Pastor Ware, for your, and your church, for your dedication to the community, that's what we need, because the church is in us, and we are the representative. And so we are living epistles read by men every single day, and so that's what it's about. It's not about people coming to you, but you going out into the community. And Pastor Johnson, thank you for coming. I met with Pastor Johnson just this morning, and his question was, what can the faith community do in the community? What can we do to make a difference? Pastor Johnson, here's your example. So we did discuss some things this morning, but I think you have shown us tonight exactly what he needed to hear and how their group can make a difference in the city. So thank you so much for being the example. Oh, I did want to thank, because he may leave before we go, but I just want to say, Naziah, thank you. Alyssa is my sister, my sister-in-law, so, sister-in-law-in-law, so I want to say thank you so much, and I'm sure she's happy about that. Thank you.
Thank you all once again, sir. We're now at the public hearings part of this meeting, page five, Item E1. And, and we understand if you need to leave.
You don't have to listen to the sermon.
Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorized in the city of con, to, of contract debt and issue general obligation, general improvement bonds in the amount of $55,315,000 to finance the cost of various public improvement projects. The proposed bond ordinance will allow the city the flexibility to issue bonds if market conditions at the time of a bond sale provide the best financing option for the city. The ordinance is in support of the projects in the city's adopted Year 2020 Capital Improvement Plan, or the CIP. This ordinance includes the customary authorization to issue bond anticipation notes prior to a bond sale should cash flow or market conditions dictate the use of such financing. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moving in second, call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
No, sir. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Page 21, Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number CU 2019-0006 to Studio 128 LLC for the operation of a banquet slash function hall at 7202 Warwick Boulevard and Zone C2 General Commercial. The proposed banquet slash function hall will be located in a portion of a building of a major arterial that backs up to the CSX railroad, railroad. The request is consistent with the One City, One Future Comprehensive Plan 2040 Land Use Map. On August the 7th, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend approval of the request with conditions. The city manager also recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moved in second, call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Moved in second, any discussion?
Yes, I had a question because later, when I was reading about it, it said something about this is a rental agreement. Do we own the building, is that what you mean?
No, we don't own the building. I'm not sure what your reference is.
Said the maximum occupancy of the building will be 300, with events ending no later than 11:00 PM as designated in the rental contract.
In the contract, when they contract someone, that's as late as they can say.
Oh, okay.
When someone wants to use the facility.
No, we have nothing to do with that. Thank you, that clarifies it for me.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds and agreements necessary to effectuate the conveyance of a deed of temporary construction and access easement, access easement over certain city-owned property located at 2200 Terminal Avenue, Newport News, to Hamner Road Sanitation District. The land area of the first easement is approximately 3,207 square feet, and the second easement is 3,291 square feet, located at the same address. The easements will be used for the construction of a sanitary force main between Terminal Avenue and Jefferson Avenue. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moved in second, call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Moved in second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Page 67, Item E4 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a surplus city-owned undeveloped parcel located at 714 South Avenue, and authorizing the city manager to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the conveyance. Approval is sought for the conveyance of a surplus city-owned undeveloped parcel identified as Amaya's Framing Inc. Amaya's Framing Inc. plans to construct an approximately 500 square feet single-family home residence on the property in accordance with all applicable city and state codes and regulations. The purchase price of the 60-by-100-foot lot is currently excess value of $35,000. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moved in second, call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Moved in second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item F contains the following items, minutes of the work session of August 13th, minutes of the special section, minutes of the regular meeting of the same date, a request to amend and re-ordain the City Code Chapter 6, Animals and File Article 2, Dogs and Cats, generally, Section 6-25, running at large, disposal of impounded animals by adding a $100 civil penalty to owners of dogs found running at large in packs. Also, a request to amend and re-ordain City Code Chapter 29, Parks, Squares, and Recreation Facilities, Article 2, General Regulations Governing Parks, Squares, Beaches, Golf Courses, et cetera. Section 29-50, Regulation for Dogs, by adding a $100 civil penalty to owners of dogs found running at large in packs. Do any of these need to be removed by council? If not, a motion to approve consent agenda items F1 through F5, all inclusive, is in order. Moved in second, any discussion?
I just had a question, and, and help me, if, so it says dog found running at large, at large or in a pack?
There's already a provision dealing with dogs running at large. The state legislature this past session mandated localities to pass the civil penalty for dogs running at large in a pack, and they defined a pack as two or more dogs.
Okay, that's, I was like, what is a pack?
When it was introduced, it was going to be local option, and when it came out, it was, locality shall adopt these.
So it's two or more?
So then, yeah, but the funny thing, I think you-
So what do you do if you see it?
You can report it to the animal control officers. We, we had to develop a civil penalty form for them.
Because I'll probably be so far gone.
Tina is scared of dogs.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item G1, Madam Manager.
Yes, the first item is a request to city council to receive and open bids for granting a utility easement over city-owned property located at 701 Jefferson Avenue, and I recommend you refer to my office for handling.
All right, a bid from Dominion for $1.
Wow, don't you think they ought to go up to two?
Yeah, good luck with that. All right, Item G2, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution supporting an application to Virginia Department of Transportation for an allocation of $8 million to the VDOT Revenue Sharing Program for fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Moved in second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item G3, Madam Manager.
Yes, this is a request to adopt an ordinance renaming a public right-of-way from Hogan Drive to Tech Center Parkway, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Moved in second, any discussion?
I just think that if we're going to change the name, they should have paid for the road. I'm just saying. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope it wasn't named in honor of somebody who is going to feel dishonored that they do-
Texan?
No. No, Hogan Road. They want to change Hogan Road, right, to-
Who was that?
The public part of the road, yes.
Call the roll, please.
I was just thinking out loud.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item G4, Madam Manager.
Yes, this is one of two related items. The first is a request to approve a resolution that will appropriate $4,500 from state grant revenue from the Virginia Commission for the Arts for allocation by the city to local performing and fine arts organizations, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved in second, any discussion? Call the roll. Yes?
I did have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On number 14 and number 15? Um, the, um, 14, 15, and 16, we have the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra, the York River Symphony Orchestra, I just, and the Young Audiences, Arts for Learning Virginia Incorporated, and so the question's that, and I said something to Ms. Cipriana, but she said she didn't think these folks would be here. But if we have the Newport News Arts Commission, how come we're funding Williamsburg in York County, in York River, if it's Newport News? That was, and, and I wanted someone, I'm sorry that they're not here to explain that to me. But then, because the other question I have is, when we look at the orchestras and, and the composition of the orchestras, how many youth are involved in either one of these? How do these organizations benefit Newport News?
My, my guess is that, is that that orchestra is a specific type of orchestra that's not something that our students have, other than going there to do it. It's more of a regional-type effort, is what I would assume.
And my understanding, and we get you a more definitive answer, that the musicians, there are some musicians from the city of Newport News, and they provide a different types of concerts throughout the region, but I can get you a more definitive answer. My assumption would be that there are musicians from Newport News that are part of this program, as well as there are some events that are held in Newport News, but I can get you a more definitive answer.
Okay, because I saw that some of the, some of the performers are from Newport News, but how do we fund them if they're not from, I mean, if it's not a Newport News entity?
You fund other, you fund other organizations that have performances.
Okay, and the other question for the young audiences, and, and because I don't know much about, other than what we have here, and we're always trying to look for opportunities for our youth, how many youth are from Newport News in this Young Audiences, Arts for Learning Virginia Incorporated? And if, if we can get that number, and then, how many, how can more youth get involved in this? What's the strategy? If we don't have any youth involved in it, and we're giving some funding of $10,000 to it, then how do we get our youth more involved in this entity as well?
We will get those answers to questions for you from the commission.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I also had some, Virginia Sage Company is another one, because we don't ever have a performance on this side, it's always on South Side, and I've heard several of my constituents call and say, why are we funding so much when most of the concerts are given on South Side instead of here? We used to have coffee concerts here, a lot of the elderly really loved them because it was in the morning, they didn't have to drive at night. So I would just like for this committee, whoever decides goes for what, and I've looked for all of them, and I think most of them are really- I think most of them are really good, but I think some of them really need to be examined that, that if we are supporting, then we need a little more performance on this side, and maybe, I know they had coffee concerts on the South Side this year, but none over here, and I just, I don't think it's right for our citizens to pay taxes to support, and I believe in, you know, regional support, but I'm saying, when something is never over here, then we need to examine it a little bit more.
I think it might be a good idea, because you've had questions in the past, and you do appoint the commission, the Arts Commission that makes this funding, I'd be more than happy to have them come to a work session and talk to you about some of the activities, some of the programs. I'm sure they can give you more detail, because I know they go through a very elaborate process when they're making these selections, and they have applications and they review them, but I think it would be timely for us in it.
I agree.
Bring a work session, and you can ask them these questions, because this is a board that you, that you appoint and give them this opportunity to do this program.
Also, I wanted to say something about Ferguson Center, the first one, that's twenty thousand dollars, and second one, Arts for All, they do give out free tickets, but the first one, you know, should we be, should we be as a community when many people can't afford the tickets to go? But I did like the second one where they say they do provide complimentary tickets to schools and nonprofit organizations serving families and children in adverse, in adverse risk communities. That I agree with, but the other one, you know, many of the people whose taxpayers, taxpayer money we're using can't afford the tickets to go, so I don't know why we're supporting it at that, at that level.
Well, I know that Ferguson Center, when we have musicians come in, they, they have students come there as part of that, to teach and learn, I don't know if that covers some of that expense.
Well, I think it covers it in the second one, I don't think it covers it in the first one, but these would be some of the questions we could ask.
Absolutely, we'll share that with them, because the whole idea that council provides this funding is to open up the arts to the community, and I'm sure we want to make sure that's what's happening.
Yeah, and I do support the, the arts, I just want to make sure that, that we're supporting those entities that are really impacting, especially our young people, that's really critical, and here we have Mosaic Steel, they asked for ten thousand, and we gave them five, and that, that's a huge entity for our youth in the southeast community, especially to learn the steel drums, I mean, steel orchestra, so I just think we really need to look at that really closely, and I would love for them to come and to give some explanation as to how, because.
This is their recommendation to you, so you should be, have an opportunity to hear from them.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Item G five, Madam Manager.
Yes, this is the second part, and I believe this is the one you were discussing, the funding for. This is a request to approve a resolution that approves specific grant awards to various local performing and fine arts organizations in accordance with recommendations from the Newport News Arts Commission, and I recommend approval, and we'll get that, have that meeting scheduled for you.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Should we think about tabling this part of it until after we have that meeting?
Well, you can always change the amounts.
Oh, you can?
And I don't know the programming activity, it may impact their ability to do some of the programs that they approve. We can try and get some answers to your questions sooner rather than later, and then schedule that meeting with the forward.
But is this in stone, what we're giving?
I don't think anything is in stone with this council.
That's what we're obligating houses.
I thought maybe they were like the Ten Commandments.
Well, this is the list that they've put forward, that's their recommendation, so absent some other direction from you, they will proceed with this, and I know a lot of these organizations depend on this money, so if they don't get it, it may impact their ability.
Well, you say school has started, but how many of these focus on you, on our youth and our schools?
But I would hate for us not to fund it when we have questions, but we know they're doing something, they're working with our children, well, maybe I shouldn't assume that everybody knows, but I know, like, the Peninsula Fine Arts Center, I would hate for us not to do it, and the children aren't, somebody is there. Maybe, maybe I would, just for me, I would say, if we could support it tonight, and so when they come in for next year, we'll be better informed.
Aware of their process.
Well, at least when we meet, we can give them our expectations, so that they shouldn't be replicated in this, this document we have today, so.
Well, this is the third year that I've asked and questioned that, and so I'm not going to, I support soundscape, I support all of that, but I think until it's heard, until we get an explanation, we're going to continue to repeat that, and that's not, that's not good, that we continue to fund, fund, fund. I ask the question every year, and it seems like it hasn't been heard yet, and I just think it's important for them to hear. So thank you, Madam Manager, for having them to come in.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Against.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven one.
Item G six.
Six one.
Yes, this is one of two items. The first is a request to approve a resolution appropriating twelve point three million dollars for the Route one oh five Fort Eustis Boulevard Bridge over the Newport News Lee Hall Reservoir Replacement Project from the FY two thousand and seventeen State of Good Repair Program at five point one million, from the fiscal year 2020 State Revenue Sharing Program, three point six million, and from the Streets and Bridges category of the FY two thousand and twenty bond authorization, three point six million, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Okay, I'm informed on item G five, we did not have a motion, we had a discussion and a vote, but not a motion, so could we have that, please?
So moved.
Moved in second. Do we need to re-vote? Good, thank you. All right, item G seven, Madam Manager.
Yes, this is the second component of that item, and this is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the standard project administration agreement by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia, and the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Fort Eustis Boulevard Bridge replacement over the Newport News Reservoir Project, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Item H, Madam Manager.
Yes, we have two appropriations, and the first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating fifty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and seventeen cents of interest earned in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen from the nicer bequests to the Newport News Department of Libraries and Information Services for the Main Street Library. And the second item is a request to approve a resolution appropriating twenty-two million, twenty-two million, forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the Newport News Transportation Center Project from Regional Surface Transportation Program Grant Funds of two million, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars, congestion mitigation and air quality, CMAC Grant Funds for four million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars, and inner-city passenger rail operating cost fund grant, grant funds in the amount of fourteen point five million dollars, and I recommend approval of both resolutions.
Is there a motion to approve items H one and H two, all inclusive? Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Okay, we are now at comments by citizens, Jermaine to the business of council. Thank you. Antonio Thompson.
Thank you very much, everyone's looking good, Trump twenty twenty. In the name of Jesus Christ, my name is Antonio Thompson, I have to give a shout-out to my first cousin Walida, it's her birthday, she's the daughter of Hakima Mohammed, a few of you may know her. Trump twenty twenty, First Thessalonians, Chapter four, verse sixteen, Trump of God. Donald Trump is the Trump of God, and all armed forces throughout the cities of the United States of America, that means every American with the right to bear arms, is universally in the armed forces of the United States of America, please see it no different. Every police officer and fire personnel, Trump twenty twenty, they need a one hundred percent pay raise, the police budget, fire department budget, first emergency responders, they need a one hundred percent increase, and criminal justice need a blank check, we're going to let the, we're going to let the check bounce on criminal justice, we're going to let the hangings ain't a bad thing. Execution does deter crime. Trump twenty twenty. Citizens owning guns must come into collaboration and cooperation with the police department, please, every one of you, or we're going to have police officers shooting police officers, armed forces shooting armed forces, citizens in neighborhoods shooting each other, we don't want that, so everybody with guns got to get together, and we don't want our Second Amendment taken away from us either. It's not the guns that's causing the problem, it's the ignorant people with the guns that don't understand, the Second Amendment is for when the government get nervous about guns. Government get nervous about guns, the people should be concerned, because when government get nervous about guns, they start taking guns, you're going to need your guns. I want to thank you all for this time. I don't have a lot of it. None of us do. We have to get busy. The Great Recession is coming, and Great World War come with it. I've been paying attention to European history for fifty years, war, come on now, you know about war, city attorney? Corporation of Newport News, I do love them, and we're going to have to stand together against Richmond, Washington DC, and the United Nations, we got an independent flag, I think our flag needs to be the biggest and come first, and the other flags follow our rank, we're an independent city. Trump twenty twenty.
Thank you, sir. Barbara Futrell. Good evening.
That was a lot, but anyway, I really wanted to address the mayor, I wanted it to kind of be private, but took a lot of guts for me to come in front of you, sir, today. I, I like to voice my opinion, it's kind of gotten me in a world of trouble, but a lot of it has to do with my son, he's eight with autism, it's kind of boiled down to my son, but my family, I've tried to, like, do right and go to justice for what has occurred, and I think a lot of my family history, not dealing with me, but my brothers per se, has, like, dwelled down on me, and it's allowed me not to get justice for my sons, and even standing in here, I've had a lot of, you know, kind of, people trying to put me down, not to come in front of you today, but I'm not easily, you know, like, I'm not easily scared, but I would like to talk to you, because I feel like the justice system is very, it's very, how could I say it, one-sided, and I would love justice for my sons, I'm fighting back tears right now, trying to talk to you, but my son has been through a lot, and I have a lot of pictures and evidence, a lot of it has to do with the school board, but I've tried to take it to your police officers, I've gone to eternal affairs, I've tried to talk to your assistant that whispered to you earlier, I've left a ton of messages for you, sir, I've not been able to get to you, and if you allow me at least a couple of minutes to meet with you to address.
Well, I can tell you what I'll do.
Yes, sir.
You had an appointment and didn't show at one time, you're welcome to make another and hope you attend that next.
Well, I actually, your assistant actually came to that appointment, which I have a worker that works with me, I came to that appointment, but I was told that you weren't here, I don't know if she shared that with you.
I was there at the appointment time in my office, ma'am, I don't know what happened, but you're welcome to make another appointment, we'd be happy to talk with you.
Okay, ma'am, do you mind if I make one with you, so you know it's going to be kept?
I don't handle my schedule, ma'am, you have to talk to a young lady in the lobby.
Is that the assistant that whispered to you earlier? Okay, thank you.
Adrian Whitcomb. Good evening.
Good evening, I was thinking earlier today what I would talk about tonight, and I picked the topic.
Let me guess.
Well, I actually picked the topic volunteers, and it just so happened it worked out great, I'm sorry the people aren't here now, but I was thinking primarily, all these events I've been to recently, not only recently, but in the past too, but a couple of weeks ago, out at Fort Monroe, there was a big event going on there, the sixteen nineteen commemoration, now, we, we always look at the, the main speakers out there and the officials in charge of all this, but it took a lot of volunteers. I know a few of the people that were involved on committees that did planning, and they started this planning years ago. It takes a city to make a city great, it takes the citizens, it takes the citizens to make a state great, to make this area great, so when I think of, of my home, I think of, not only of Newport News, of course, of the state of Virginia, the United States, but when I go over to Hampton, I, I feel at home there too, and even over to Norfolk, and over to South Side, and I'm glad that we can share things with these other communities. But I would like to make a point that there are plenty of people who would like to volunteer to do even more for this city. I know we spend a lot of time talking about things that could be done, and would, would be nice to be done, but if we just let these citizens direct their actions toward actually doing some of these things, and I have to go back to the city forum, of course, and talk about that, because there's a lot of things that could be done by volunteers, but at this point, of course, we're still waiting to get out on the property to even do anything. So think about it, there are organizations that would help as far as cleaning up any areas that would need to be cleaned up, donating things for the, for the park, and I'm sure the Appalachian Trail Club would like to be involved as far as any planning of a trail there, but there's lots of volunteers, and of course, we could talk about companies, businesses, and grants from, from businesses and from other government agencies, but first you have the, have the determination to let all these things happen, and they will happen, so let's think about that, and thanks to all the volunteers that made this city great, and let's make it even greater, thank you.
Thank you. Carol, and I'm not. Carol, and I'm not- Carcuff, yes. Good evening. Sorry, I couldn't see.
Good evening. I'm Carol Carcuff, and I live at 197 Revelle Drive in Newport News, Denby, 23608. It's a pleasure to come back and say hello to you all. Many of you are new faces to me. But I came across a very interesting article this week concerning the importance for all of us to spend time in a park, spending time in open spaces that can make you healthier and happier. I brought you Council members. I have two copies that you can share to read to continue giving our city residents and visitors healthy parks, healthy places. We've got Newport News Park, we've got Mitchville Park, we have several. I don't know what's going on down at the city park area yet. But I see open spaces that haven't, where the trees haven't come down yet, and it's very important. This article, I was really surprised this week because open spaces, safe areas to enjoy, it's not just a fun area, it's not just a fun thing, but it's approved by medical doctors that this is very important for all of our lives. You know, when you have the chance to get out of the area and drive to open spaces, it's important. So I'm gonna share these with you. And there's one other thing that I'd like to do. Thank you. I'd like to thank all of our trash collectors and our rubbish collectors in our area of Denby. They do a great job. And it's really nice to see that when my neighbor works so hard to clean out the brush and it's on the street, and our people come and pick it up. They do a neat job. And Mike and I, my husband, we really do appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dean Fleming. Good evening.
Evening, sir. Dean Fleming, 162 Pine Bluff Drive, Newport News, Virginia, 23602. Want to address the city council about the portable signs. Um, I've run a portable sign business, and from what I understand, the portable signs were deleted, which basically eliminates my business and, from running in Newport News. Trying to find out about getting it reversed so I can run my business again. Uh, the business was started in 1970, and I've been running it since 2002. I bought it from Bob Norris, which had a business to start with.
The, the type of sign you're speaking of, with the little H wire?
No, it's a portable sign. Um, they're on tra, they're on semi-trailers. Um, I had to go and get it through codes and compliance for a permit. But when I went to try and get a permit, they said that they're no longer authorized. And what I found online was somewhere in September of last year where the portable signs and a whole bunch of other signs were, the ordinances were changed on them.
And this codes and compliance said that?
Well, I found this online.
They do enforce them, but it would've gone through planning. It deals with the signs, but code enforcement zoning would've did the enforcement.
But I mean, I drove around and there's a whole bunch of A-frames, banners, and other portable signs that are out there that had been up there for almost three years and haven't been, for I know, talked about by codes to have them taken down.
I, I can get the Director of Planning to address it if you would like right now, or we can give you a report.
Yes, correct. When the new sign ordinance was adopted, that was removed from the sign ordinance. The signs that are currently out there are non-conforming and they can remain. So codes will not go and pick them up.
So you're telling me that we have no, any kind of rules that a, a, a temporary sign can be put up anywhere?
You can put up a temporary sign, but the type of sign that he's talking about is a sign, a portable sign that's on a chassis, which is different than a temporary sign.
I don't understand that.
Well, it's a different sign in the sign ordinance that was removed when the sign ordinance was adopted. When the new sign ordinance was adopted, that was deleted out of the sign ordinance.
A portable sign?
Portable signs, yes.
And that means it's on the back of a truck or something?
Yes, or you can put them in the front of your building. They're on a chassis, on wheels, and you can roll them and take them to another location.
Oh, okay.
Well, and that's not allowed anymore?
No, no, ma'am.
That you can't take it to another location or?
No, that you cannot install a new one. If you already had one on your site, it's considered non-conforming because most of them that were already out there, uh, we, we did not, well, we couldn't remove them. You know, they came up whenever the owner's lease was up on that particular sign. But a new one could not go back in that, in their place.
And what was the rationale for this?
It was something that the city had been looking at as far as changing over signs now. Most people are going to the electronic signs, and those, we just didn't have as many out there as you had before. A lot of the ones that had been on chassis had been attached to poles, and they were no longer on chassis. So it's just changing in the times.
And the reason the entire sign ordinance was, was redone was because of a US Supreme Court case that pretty much all around the state, everybody had to re-adopt their sign ordinances to be, so that they, you can't regulate based on the content of the sign. You can regulate size and type, location.
I don't know. I, I kinda feel like we need to discuss that again. Just my opinion.
Or is there anything we can do to, is it any kind of conforming that he can do to stay in business, you know? Anything?
We would have to go back and revisit the sign ordinance if you wanted, in order to allow that to happen.
Yeah, that's all you can do would be to ask us to revisit the sign ordinance. And I, I would caution you doing that because I wouldn't imagine this isn't the only situation where there's been a problem because of the sign ordinance.
But we adopted that because of the state. When we got, the state required us to come in alignment, is that correct?
The US Supreme Court decided a case involving signage, uh, and pretty much every locality in the state had to revamp their sign ordinances. And we were, we took a little bit longer than most localities. We wanted to see what everybody else was doing.
We certainly get a report and have a work session with you on this as well, just to get, revisit the sign, just so you know the other components of it also in case there's anything that you have questions about.
Yeah, I mean, putting people out of, out of business, I think is not a good idea.
Well, I certainly don't think that was the intent of it, but sometimes that's-
The result of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes you have to adapt.
Well, but then can, so would, would you just, see if you can go to the source, the federal government would be who he needed to talk to? If he wanted to-
This was a decision by-
It would have to be referred by council. Could refer it back to Planning Commission, and their Regulations Committee would take a look at it and see whether they would want to recommend to council or to Planning Commission to consider it. And then Planning Commission would make a recommendation to council to consider putting it back in.
And not to be crass, but you know, sometimes you have to adapt. Are there other types of signs you can make?
No, these are 25 signs, well, 25 signs that I bought, that they're just portable signs. I put letters on them for each and, that change per location and individual company that wants to use them for different locations. I do also ones for nonprofit organizations, which don't have all locations. They just advertise like, um, special events that they're having and things like that.
I would suggest you let us come back with a report with more detailed information on the process that was gone through. Because as the Director mentioned, it was, and the city attorney, it was a very lengthy process that had a lot of review. So I would recommend we come back to you with a report.
And with this, I was the only, and as far as I know, I'm the only portable sign business that was in Newport News. Everybody else was just a business that went out to like Costco or something and bought one of the signs. So I had to put it up for 60 days, take it down, and I could only have it up for 180 days out of the year. So that's how I was making a little extra money on top of my regular job.
Okay. Well, as, as you heard, we're gonna revisit and see if there's anything we're gonna do different than what we currently have, sir. Thank you. Vernon Porter Jr. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Vernon L. Porter Jr. I live at 79 Jeffries Drive, Newport News, 23601. Uh, I have two subjects. The first one, and I'm sure y'all have already gone through this, but I recused myself a little bit after Trump got elected, so I'm coming back out now. Huntington, the old school building. Uh, since it's a historic landmark and since, uh, Whittaker Memorial probably be the only other building that would be even close to the age of that, that has sort of a historical significance. I realize that there's gotta be a new middle school. But I was wondering if the building could be left because of its architectural, historical significance to be used as maybe a community empowerment center. Something similar to what you have at South Morrison. Social service could teach maybe parenting classes out of there. Justice system could maybe teach anger management. Redevelopment housing could teach, um, first owners classes out of it. Also, I would like to suggest, though I'm not sure that this is feasible because of the parking situation, that, uh, the Huntington Auditorium is probably the largest auditorium down here. I believe it's larger than Heritage. And if you had people that had local productions, even though, uh, the center beside the library, I can't believe I'm-
Down and Gross.
Thank you, yes. Down and Gross is a beautiful auditorium. It, it only seats what, 300 people?
272.
Yeah. And sometimes it's not cost efficient for people that want to put on a production or play or something like that. So not to say don't build Huntington Middle School, but to consider not tearing down something with such historical significance if it could be used for other structures safely. Now, the only other thing I could see is there might be a lot of revamp that has to occur to meet codes, which is probably why you need to get rid of the building anyway because it's requiring a lot of upkeep because of age. So that's the first one. And the second item I wanted to talk about was the Newport News Water Works bill. I got a bill and it, I had the papers out and now I don't have the papers. Anyway, what it comes down to is that when you get a bill, my last bill, and I went back, the, the bill date was 8/8, and the due date was 8/27. That allows 21 days. I went back and checked. All the bills, there's only like 21 or maybe 24 days for a citizen to pay a Newport News Water Works bill. Now, the reason it's that way, my understanding is, is because the ordinance was passed by city council saying that that's the way it was gonna function. And that's how they apply the late fees. Uh, the ordinance is 2.2. Oh, here we go. City Code 2-12.1. And so my suggestion is that we, it's the greatest ideal coming up that, uh, city council created Water Works. That Mayor, I believe it was the Mayor Biggins. But people should get more than a credit card term. It shouldn't be charged like a credit card company. That's what credit card companies do, so they can charge late fees to their customers. So I like, if possible, and I know maybe I should've gone to Water Works, but I got a feeling that they're gonna say, because the ordinance was created, that that's why they're doing it this way.
Okay.
The one good thing is that they did make it on a monthly basis instead of every two months.
I've allowed you more time so you could finish that. But um, we will, um, look at that and see if there's something we plan to change in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And more use of Soul Power, please.
On that line, I did have a couple of, of, um, people who've always paid their bills on time get that very same thing that happened because they didn't realize that was such a short period before they got the payment in. I guess they didn't. So I did have a couple of complaints on that. So we may wanna look at-
But the code section that he's citing is in Chapter Two of the code, and it's just the general that says, when a bill due, the city's not paid on time, that's when penalty and interest will apply. It doesn't say that, you know, it's only 14 days or 21 days. It's, that's, that's determined elsewhere.
Yeah, that's what we'll have to take a look at.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because this is not the first time I've heard that.
And I believe he mentioned three weeks, so I, I need to find out. 21 days.
Which is kinda short, I guess, if you're paying by check as opposed to the online.
Some people pay by online.
There's only one more week in the month, though. It is a monthly bill.
Okay, those are all the cards I have turned, and we're now at new business. Madam Manager.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
Don't forget, we do have one resolution in the new business someone needs to bring up. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Please join me in thanking Indiana Brown for all she's done for us and wishing her well in her future endeavors.
Absolutely, thank you. I miss you. All right, Councilman Jenkins.
Nothing for the evening.
Okay, I, I am next. And the only thing I wanna talk about is, is, uh, something that was very near and dear to me happened today, and I got to visit, um, the old Whittaker Hospital, which is now, uh, being constructed for apartments. And it, it was interesting to walk in the nursery once again that's now an apartment with the surgical suites. And they've done some original things by keeping the original tile there. It's, it's, it's a fabulous building and, and, um, to your points, sir, about, you know, old buildings and what can be done, that's an example of something unique. Bill, I believe was built in 47, and it's a monster building. So it probably would've cost us millions of dollars to tear it down if it was built so well. But to see that, my father-in-law's office was in the basement, to be able to revisit that. I spent a lot of time in that hospital as a kid, so. So, um, we'll, we'll really appreciate that. It's gonna be a, a great asset to the community, and it looks real well. It's done very well. So when you get a chance, um, take a look. I think they're open for business for those who want to rent.
Yes, I believe October 1st, and they've already have people waiting to go in.
Right. Okay, Councilwoman Scott.
Yes, just have a few things, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanna thank everyone for coming down tonight. It's always a pleasure to hear what you have to say. So we appreciate, um, the transparency and open government. But also want to thank, uh, Madam Manager for, um, ensuring that we kept on track with the discussions between the school board and the city council. And I think it was a fruitful meeting to be able to have that exchange of information so that now we are all getting the same information at the same time. So thank you, Madam Manager, for facilitating that and making it happen. I, um, do want to just mention a couple of things. Tomorrow, we have a day of remembrance here at City Hall. Tomorrow is 9/11, the day that changed the way we think about our country forever. And there's a remembrance here at City Hall tomorrow at 10 o'clock. And on, um, on Saturday, um, September 14th, I want to invite you all to the peninsula, I mean Newport News Williamsburg International Airport. We have a 5K on the runway. It is one of the first activities that have actually happened at the airport in some, some years. I can't even remember when the last time. But I encourage you all to come out because, uh, the airport is trying to change the way we do things and to become a part of the community. So please come out and support 5K on the runway on Saturday, 9/14 at 8:00 AM. And of course, the biggest event of the year is Denby Day on September 21st, Saturday. And it starts at 11 o'clock on, uh, at Denby High School and comes through Old Courthouse Way. Say again?
10, not 11.
11. They line up at 10:45, it starts at 11.
No.
Better check on it.
You better, it's 9:15 and they start at 10.
She might be right. But anyways, Denby Day is September 20, September 21st. I'm not even gonna debate that point right now 'cause I'm, have some other issues I'm thinking about. But also, I wanna thank everybody who came to the last, um, North District Town Hall meeting. Dr. Parker was our guest speaker that evening to talk about some of the new things that are going on in Newport News Public Schools. And the police department, engineering and planning, they really, really ensured the success of the meeting. This was the, the first meeting, Madam Manager, in a long time that I had to tell them at 9 o'clock, you don't have to go home, but you have to leave here. The meeting lasted the entire two hours and people were not finished. So, but that just shows that the citizens are now interested in what's going on in the city and some of the things that we are doing. And it's an exchange of information at the North District Town Hall meeting. So I encourage you all to join us for the next meeting, which is September 23rd at Denby Community Center at 7 o'clock. So, uh, I also want to take this just as a point of personal privilege to thank, um, Ms. Indiana Brown for your service to, uh, to our, our council and, and all that you've done for me whenever I call you on short notice and I let my lack of planning become an emergency. I call you on short notice and I let my lack of planning become an emergency for you and I appreciate you. And I just want to say thank you publicly. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Vic?
I too want to give my goodbyes to Ms. Indiana Brown. During the short while you were here, you have been such an added, such an added asset to our City Clerk's office and I am definitely sad to see you leaving. But I know that in life, everybody has opportunities to go on to, not bigger, but just other places. So well wishes to you. And I just wanna also say, Councilwoman Scott, I will be joining you all at the 5K on the runway on Saturday.
Thank you.
And to just thank you to Pastor Ware and his church. I think he, he along with this young man, you all just added a different spirit to the meeting tonight and I thank you all for your presence. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Yes, Isaiah, thank you. I heard Isaiah, Councilwoman Vic, I mean, sorry, Vice Mayor Vic and I were at the teacher's new breakfast, the breakfast for new teachers. And Isaiah gave that poem. And I, having been a former music teacher, it would give me great pleasure to think that I touched somebody's life like his was touched. And so thank you for sharing your gifts and your praise for your teacher. I also would like to thank the people who came from the church. We, we had a wonderful meeting there. It was so uplifting, except it wasn't a theater and it was dark. So I had a little bit of a problem manipulating through the thing. But I, I urge, the reason I wanted them to come was because they can be an example for what all of our churches could do and how we could impact the community in such a positive way. I mean, to think 15,000 hours this year, it's incredible. And if each of our churches would do that, and I'm gonna challenge mine to meet it, it would be transformative. And so I, I really do appreciate it. And I think that's all I'm gonna say for tonight. Thank you all for coming. We always love to hear from you.
Councilwoman Cherry?
I'd like to say good evening to everyone and thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate all of you for being here and even those who are watching, we want to say thank you. Please know that your voice matters and we want to hear what your concerns are. But also, it's great to hear when people can say thank you. So we appreciate the resident that came up and at least said thank you to us for some things that we try to do for the, for the citizens of the city. Indiana, thank you. You will be sorely missed. She is the person that I can call and ask, where am I supposed to be? So, so I'm gonna be in real trouble, Mabel. We have to get someone to find me and tell me, because I'm always ending up at the wrong location. So Indiana, I will miss you and thank you so much for being, being here for us. I appreciate you. I too want to say happy birthday to Walida Hooker. I got to meet her this morning at a meeting and she was so excited about being 45. So Walida, I've been there, done that. Congratulations to you for that milestone. I pray many more years for you. I'd like to give condolences to Assistant Chief Grinstead and the passing of his mom, Babel Grinstead. She was a delightful woman. She was a strong fighter. She was a great mother and she was also a great dancer. So I just want him to know that my prayers are with he and his family and she will be sorely missed. But she was a strong woman, so just want to give that, those condolences to his family. Also want to thanks Park and Rec. Always want to make sure we give kudos to Ms. Popoloski and his staff. We had a great World Arts Festival celebration. We had a lot of fun, a lot of good talent. And we want to, Councilwoman Scott and I were talking about how we're gonna try to see some changes for the next year, so we're excited about that. But we're excited for what you do and your group because you're behind the scenes, but you make things happen for us as a city. So I want to say thank you to you. I just want to announce that the homicide family support group that's hosted by the Police Department, we will meet tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at headquarters. And I like to invite family members of those who are facing challenges for loss of a loved one. It is a safe place and a space to share your personal experiences. And you coming helps to support other others and help them get through these trying times with the loss of a loved one. I do want to let you know that we will have your voice matter South District Town Hall meeting, one is scheduled for this Thursday, September the 12th. That's at the Midtown Community Center. And then again, next Thursday, September the 19th, that's at the Down and Gross Culture Arts Center. And both of those town hall meetings are from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And last, I want to say thank you to our 911 dispatchers. You may never see them out in the community, but they are such a vital part to our community and to our city. And because of their training and because of their commitment, I just want them to know that it has not gone unnoticed. And because of them, lives are, are saved every single day. So I just want to send a kudos to them and let them know how much we appreciate them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris, since you're last, would you do the resolution, please?
All right. A resolution of the Council of the City of Newport News, Virginia, confirming, ratifying, and terminating the declaration of a local emergency issued by the Newport News Director of Emergency Management on September 3rd, 2019, made necessary by Hurricane Dorian.
Second.
Moving to the second. End of discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carry, 7-0.
All right. And good evening to everyone and always want to thank everyone who stays engaged with what's going on here in the City of Newport News and our local government. So thank you for everybody who's here and who's watching online and on TV. I do want to send, say publicly, thank you, Ms. Indiana. As there's already been echoed by my colleagues, I don't know where I would be without you getting me in the right place and making sure I know that I'm supposed to be somewhere. So thank you for all that you've done. I'm gonna miss you. And I wish much success to you on your next endeavor. And I don't know what I'm gonna do now, so.
Now I see why she's leaving. Not working in the neighborhood.
So if you find me in the wrong location in the next couple of weeks... Now you know why. No, but I do thank you from, from the depths of my heart for all that you've done to help me out since you've been here. To Mr. Gore, thank you for sharing your, your beautiful poem, phenomenal poem about a teacher that I know quite well and you spoke so eloquently of her and you epitomized all that she's done. And she's retired now, but she left a, a mark on many students and I see it through you. And I know you're gonna be a great representative for the school board as a student advisor this year. So looking forward to big things from you as well. And I know you're gonna have a great year at Warwick High School. And to all the students that started school now, four days in, just wish you a great school year to everyone. And to those that are interested, and this is my last, and those that are interested in donating to the Hurricane Dorian Fund, there's a don to donate. I know the Books on Bikes members have sent this to me to let everyone know that on Saturday, September 14th, from 11 o'clock a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Chihuahua's Mexican Grill, that they will be having a don to donate. You can come support the Hurricane Dorian victims by eating at Chihuahua's and they will donate a portion of sales to the American Red Cross. So if you want to go out and eat, I encourage you to go out and eat at Chihuahua's Mexican Grill on 309B Oyster Point Road. And there will be a percentage that will go to the Hurricane Dorian Relief Fund and the American Red Cross. And that's all I have, Mayor Price.
Thank you.
Mayor Price, may I just add something? Since I was the only one that didn't thank Indiana and she knows how much I care. But I just want to say, for her, it is also exemplified in the whole Clerk's office. Everybody who works there is, she exemplifies what goes on there. And so I want to thank them all. And I also want to call attention to Vice Mayor Vic's grandson and my grandson, who both had a birthday yesterday. So, happy birthday. Thank you.
Since we mentioned the parade, just a note I read about it. You're not allowed to throw candy from moving vehicles. You can only hand it to willing recipients. I'm trying to ban candy, period, but anyway. I'm a dentist, man. You cannot throw candy from a moving vehicle. That's an ordinance. Read, read your note that you got. Do not throw candy from a moving...
It's been in there for 20 years.
Yeah, you can hand out toothbrushes. All right. That's all we have, right? May what you say and do uplift the City of Newport News. We stand adjourned.